Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, meeting of the Reno County Commission. Our first order of business today is the flag salute. Would you please stand with me for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome to our meeting. This morning, it is my very sad duty to inform the citizens of Reno County that District Three Commissioner Bob Bush passed on early yesterday morning, Monday, October 12th. Bob's death was due to a long, multi-year battle with cancer. Bob was elected in 2016 to the commission. He also served the community as a past city commissioner and mayor, along with various boards and commissions within the community. Bob is survived in his immediate family by his wife Anne and son Jack. Bob and his wife Anne were co-owners of City Beverage. The list of projects that Bob was involved in goes on and on. They had a special interest in public art, which is continuing in our community. I think I can speak for all the citizens of Reno County that we mourn the passing of Bob and convey to his family the deepest sympathies from Reno County, its employees, and its citizens. Bob, you will be missed greatly. The county will have additional information on Bob and his importance to our county later. Bob loved serving the citizens. That was shown in the last few months by his desire to continue to serve. Even when he did not feel good enough to attend our meetings, he was with us by phone. He wanted to continue to serve as long as he could. He did until his very last days. I never once heard him complain of his condition. A very honorable person. Future days and stories will tell more about Bob and his commitment to our community. Commissioner Hurst, do you have a comment?
I think Commissioner Sellers, you did an excellent job with that, saying what all of us feel in our hearts. I would say I came on the commission at the same time as Commissioner Bush. Bob brought about questions that were brought out the intellectual about each person that stood before us, as well as those who sat with him. And he received the highest compliment I think any of us could receive with the fact that people respected him and his thoughts. And I think we could all go on and on, but Commissioner Sellers, I'll turn this back to you.
Okay. I'd like to have just a few moments of silent prayer in honor of Bob at this time. Thank you. Okay, at this time, on a happier subject, I would like to turn the chair over to our county administrator, Randy Partington, for the introduction of a new employee, please. Randy, would you please introduce our employee and why we formed this position?
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Yes, I want to introduce our new communication specialist, Lori Moody. Lori, just a quick background, grew up in the area, has worked at the Cosmosphere, Hutchinson Community College, Wichita State University, and has come back to help Reno County get positive messaging, tell our story really to the citizens and fellow employees, let everyone know all the great things going on at Reno County. One of the initial items, you know, one of the reasons the position was created during this year was a lot of the COVID discussions that have been going on for the past few months, the county contract with Bauercom to get some messaging out, but having our own internal communications person will assist and, I guess, greatly enhance the message that we can get out for the public. So I'd like to introduce Lori.
Okay, welcome. Lori, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, and I'm very excited to be here and to serve the community and get our message out. Thank you.
Lori, thank you. We're excited to have you with us. I think the Commissioner saw her resume during the hiring process, and she's got a very favorable background to fulfill the duties of this position, and we look forward to communicating more with the citizens of Reno County.
Yes, we have so many good, positive things going on in Reno County that we just haven't got out to people, not only in the area, but the region and nationally, so, welcome.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to go on to a major part of our meeting today, which will be an update from interim health officer Karen Hammersmith and emergency manager-director Adam Weishire. After she does her presentation of updating us on where we're at with COVID-19, I'd like her to introduce her health order that she's asking us to consider, not asking us to consider, but implementing. After that, I would like Dr. Polly, if he so chooses, to address us on what he's seen in the community and what he's seeing in his share of the medical community. Then at that point in time, we have Dr. Deggner with the Hutch Regional Hospital, and Chuck Welch, and I'd like them to present what they're seeing with the present situation. And I also believe that out in the audience, we have several of our school superintendents that would like to give the commission an update as far as what is happening with the numbers that we're seeing. So with that introduction, Karen, please.
Thank you. Just to give you an update of our active cases as of now, we have 321 active cases. As of 10/08, we have the positive test rate for the school gating criteria of 16.5%, which is clearly in the red zone. We have a 14-day new active, new case total as of 10/08, which is 230, which is also clearly in the red zone. Last night, we added another cluster, so we are up to 10 active clusters. Clusters create cases very quickly in that they're connected to one another. We have two outbreaks at long-term care facilities, another in a group home setting, and also at the Hutchinson Correctional Facility. We know the inmates we don't have to deal with as much, but the staff that works out at Hutch Correctional Facility are in and amongst our community, so that makes up a large number as well that spreads in the community. If you refer to our dashboard, as people always want to say, "Well, how does this affect me?" You know, it's not a problem. On our dashboard, we have the hospitalizations that have taken place. We have the age groups broken down, and then the hospitalizations. So it's not just somebody that's been 70 years or older that has been hospitalized. We've had one under the age of 20. We've had cases between 30 and 39, 40 and 49, on up. So this can affect anybody. What the hospital is seeing right now is that we're in a critical state in the game with having so many more cases than you get more hospitalizations, and with that becomes critical care cases. There's only so many cases that you can handle with the staff that you have. So just kind of looking at those types of things, and since Dr. Deggner's here and Dr. Polly, I will let them speak to the medical part of it because I can sit up here and give you stats the whole time. But due to the cases that we have and what is going on in our community and how we want to move forward, I am implementing a order for less than 100 people at a gathering because what we really want to say is we have to take this seriously. I know we all have COVID fatigue. We are tired of dealing with COVID. We are tired of hearing about it every time we turn around, but we have a problem here in Reno County. We have one of the fastest-growing COVID cases, and so then we need to do something to address that. We've talked about social distancing. We've talked about wearing the mask, hand washing, all of these types of things, but we need to do that one more step. We need people to actually engage in this. We need community leaders to take on that role. So if somebody comes in your business, you ask them to put on a mask if they don't have it on. Step outside your comfort zone, and please ask people in places to put the mask on and then social distance. So with the order, we have exemptions in there, so if you have a facility, a stadium, or a work setting that you have employees or will have more than 100 people there, as long as you can social distance on a regular basis, that is what you need to do. And we're asking the community to please adhere to this for the safety of our community. Our kids should not be in school in the red zone. That's what Kansas Department of Education has said, that's what KDAG has said, and the CDC has said. But we know that's a really poor education, and it's a poor model, and so we're working really hard to move that backwards. We've got to slow these cases down, and we've got to get these kids in school in a in-person setting, and so that is why we are moving forward with this order.
Okay, I think we'll wait for questions from the commission until after all the presentations this morning and the more information that we receive on where we're at presently. Are there any questions of explanation of what Karen said at this time?
I don't have any at this time. I would say that I have left some information about a pediatrician regarding schoolchildren. And Karen, you and I have talked that basically you're running 28 square feet to 36 square feet per open space. If that helps people decide on social distancing, maybe that will help.
Okay.
So please feel free to take one of those.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Before we go, Adam, would you like to make your comments, please, at this point in time and facts?
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Weishire, Emergency Management Director. I'll cut quite a bit out of my report because I see you have a busy, busy meeting this morning. This is day 227 of COVID. As you know, you declared a public health emergency back on March 19th, and that was extended until December 31st. The governor has also extended her disaster declaration until November 15th of 2020, and that brings all the executive orders, including the mask mandate, with it. Kansas Health and Environment reports a total of 67,862 cases. That's up 2,055 from last Friday when they reported, and we will get an update on outbreaks tomorrow. Working with Bauercom and the Health Department, we've put out a new SitRep document that should make that information a little bit easier to digest and get out to the public. So be looking for that on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays of the week. And then I also want to remind the public that PPE requests are still available on the county website. You can request gowns, three-ply masks, or face shields from the county, and we currently have a supply of those, and we'll get those out to companies, businesses, nonprofits, medical care providers, whoever needs it on a first-come, first-served basis. We want to keep reminding people that that personal protective equipment is available, so there's no reason not to wear a mask in public. For any other requests, such as N95 masks, we have to send that to the state, and a medical request form, a resource request form is required, and those take a couple of days to get there. That's all I have for you this morning. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point in time, we'll call on Dr. Polly from the Hutchinson Clinic to...
I might refer to Dr. Deggner.
Okay.
...to do the number of conversation.
Okay, Dr. Deggner and Chuck Welch, if any thing that you have, and then we might have some questions of you, please.
Okay. Thank you for having me here today. You know, I've really got to thank Karen, hence got to, for stepping up to the plate through all this, and I'm fully supportive of the information Karen's bringing today. You know, from the hospital standpoint, you know, we do strongly recommend that we follow guidelines. Wearing a mask is a relatively simple thing to do to help mitigate some of this, as opposed to having to take more drastic, you know, steps down the road. Practice social distancing while you can, and wash your hands frequently. Wash your hands frequently, you know. We can't stress this. It's simple steps like that that can help mitigate what's going on here. From the hospital standpoint, the latest numbers, which I have, which may not be the most up-to-date, but we have 12 COVID patients in the hospital, four of which are on the ICU and two on the vent. We went through, you know, when all this started back in March and April, developed a large surge plan of how we could handle, you know, potentially large numbers of COVID patients, along with our regular patients, and we do have the facilities, the PPE, the ventilators, to handle a significant surge. What has changed since March and April is back then, a lot of healthcare was shutting itself down. We found out people were not coming in for healthcare, we were discouraging elective cases, elective surgeries, things like that. The clinics were much less busy, so we had an excess of nurses. We were furloughing a lot of our staff during that period of time because we weren't busy enough. So we had the ability to surge our staff back into our plan and handle a large number of COVID patients. What we're seeing now, though, is we've gotten busier, just in general, patients in the hospital, and we're handling the COVID patients that we have right now, and we can continue to surge, but in order to do that, we're going to have to consider at some point starting to free up some other staff, you know, Wesley Shorter staff, other places, it's harder to draw from. What we don't want to get into is, yes, we can take care of the population, and I don't want to spear, you know, spread fear that we're not capable of taking care of a significant number of COVID patients, but in order to do that down the road, should we see more significant surging going on, is we may have to turn around and talk to our providers about starting to limit elective surgeries, starting to limit elective cases, only come in for, you know, when you really need to, and we want to try and avoid that, just as we want to try, you know, avoid, you know, disrupting other things. And we also found out, we knew back in March and April, that when people started getting that message, they didn't come in for elective stuff, but they also didn't come in for the routine stuff and wound up much more sicker than they needed to be prior to coming in, and we had excess mortality, and I dare say deaths occur because people didn't seek the medical care that they should have timed to gotten. So we don't want to get back into that situation. The hospital is capable and ready, but in order to do, you know, if we see a significant surge come through, that we are going to have to change the plan and change, you know, the footprint of healthcare in the community, and we want to try and avoid that. So, you know, the simple steps, the ones we can do to help mitigate and slow this down, you know, the better.
Okay, thank you. I do have some questions, but I think I'm going to wait until everybody speaks from the medical community that wants to. Mr. Welch, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate it, and I would echo...
Could you be able to give your name and...
Sorry, Chuck Welch, Vice President from the Hutchinson Health System. Thank you. And I would echo what Dr. Deggner and Karen in our medical community have said. The interesting thing about when we prepared for what we might run into six months ago to now is that this virus has fully penetrated our community. Really, the canary in the coal mine for us was if it got into long-term care facility because of the age and the vulnerability of that population and the proximity that they live, and the ability for this virus to jump, we knew that that was a surge, that was possibly the time when the infected would outstrip our capability to take care of them. And so that's here. That's what we're dealing with, and I think now is, you know, we're entering the third quarter of probably the most important game that we've ever played. And so I think now is a call to action. We have the tools to defeat this. We have spacing. We have hand washing. We have masks. It's that simple. Now, I've heard people say, "Well, we're seeing an increase in cases because we're testing more." Well, the hospital is downstream from that. What we see is we see more extremely sick patients, much more so than we saw six, eight months ago. And so I would just implore the people of Reno County to wear your masks, wash your hands, save those hugs till next year, and really help us get ahead of this. That's all I have.
Okay, and again, I have questions, and I think Commissioner Hurst does, but we'll let Dr. Polly make his remarks and then ask questions that any of the three of you might be able to answer.
First, my heartfelt condolences to Bob's family, county commissioners, and the county as a whole. In his absence, I'm glad to see his placard up there with his name on it because that's his seat. I'm glad to see it's still there. So I know we all miss him, and everybody should recognize the great things that he and his family have done for this community. On that note, I promise to keep carrying this torch in honor of Bob and all of those like Bob that are still here. Our numbers are up, and not just by our numbers, we mean the positive test rates. It's here. I'm so grateful for our representatives from the hospital and Karen for speaking on this. It has, to use Chuck's words, "fully penetrated our community." I also want to echo Chuck that we are the canary in the coal mine, but to the other counties of Kansas. I was on a 7:00 AM meeting with a group I'm on called the Kansas COVID Work Group for Kids, a mixed specialty group of pediatric specialists, pediatricians, family physicians, psychologists, psychiatrists, sports medicine, who have helped develop the gating criteria for the Kansas Department of Education. They are looking at us because they are not here yet. And I told the representatives on there, who many of are the head of their health department for their respective counties, "You probably are here. You just don't know it." And they said, "We agree." Because they're probably not testing enough, and their little community hospitals aren't full. And I beg the people in the community to think of why. Because they don't go to those community hospitals. They come here. They go to Wichita. Our patients, at times, go to Wichita. We have an immensely robust healthcare system here. We are not the tertiary care centers for the region. Once you overwhelm the tertiary care centers and overwhelm us, you're leaving this up to providers like myself, who are trained to ventilate and innovate people, but I haven't done it in 12 years. I'm lucky to have three pulmonary critical care young, bright colleagues in town, and I'm grateful that they're here in this timing. Otherwise, you would have myself and my partners there innovating, proning, paralyzing, and ventilating your family members. Not that we're not good, but I do not want the practice again. The elderly in our community, and those who are younger but vulnerable with chronic conditions, are scared. They're scared of this virus. They are scared of their own families and of you and me. I hear it on a daily basis. They are not getting help from their young family members with groceries and other tasks because those family members will not wear masks and do not believe in COVID, and these older people think they don't matter to their own family. And they do not have the voice to express that to them because the dialogue in this community and elsewhere is being driven by politics. Vocal people, whether they know it or not, are apparent leaders, and they're leading people down the wrong path. I see it every day. As I told some others, some wonderful educators on the phone yesterday, COVID finds its way to my doorstep and every other providers, whether we're telling you about masks or I would rather encounter it in a preventative, prophylactic, mitigating manner than have to be the boots on the ground treating those who are, like Chuck said, downstream. Hospital data is lag data. I'm using that term from somebody I immensely respect, who's an educator and a superintendent. There is other lag data out there. It is worthless to me. It tells me that it's gone to hell in a handbasket. Well, I already knew that. I want lead data, the positive test rate, what the transmission is doing in this community. That is how we dictate what we do next to prevent where we are now. We have difficult decisions to make regarding our community and schools. We do this all the time during times of inclement weather, for example, ice, snow. We make the decisions to close school for the safety of our staff, the faculty, the students, and their parents. This gets real. We've lost an educator within the past year and a half on a day of inclement weather that we can't take back, that nobody made the wrong call, but it happens. We would all go back to that day and take it back for that family, and we all know the mourning and the psychological stresses on the students because of that. This pandemic is an inclement situation. It's just lasting longer. The virus has been stepping on the gas, and people in this community have been stepping on the gas with it. School is fundamental. It's important to the students' social, educational, nutritional maturation. For our most vulnerable students, it is the safest place they're at during the course of a year, but we have to balance that also with the safety of them, their family members outside of school. There are psychological ramifications of not being in class. There are also psychological ramifications of being a nervous student who's worried about your parent with a comorbidity, or your grandparent. So somebody can't come to me and tell me all students are anxious and depressed because of not being in school, because I'll show you a whole bunch of them that are anxious because they're there and we're in the red zone, and they've learned enough math and history in their educational facilities that they know where we're at better than some of these parents and other community members who are in denial. People with comorbidities do not deserve to die from this. I hear it all the time. That person had a comorbidity. Look around this room. Guess who doesn't have a comorbidity? And even the ones that you think don't, might. Not all the 31-year-old teachers with comorbidities. I have a feeling a few are afraid to raise their hand to their colleagues and say they have type 1 diabetes. We put in immense effort as a society to protect the most vulnerable. We educate the most vulnerable. We have community, county, state programs to support them. Many of us don't realize we're now the most vulnerable. We need to get real. School is important. I love sports, but I love you all more, including the ones with comorbidities. We have lost individuals who now have a spouse left, and we're on the precipice of retirement. Their diabetes or hypertension or obesity didn't kill them. COVID killed them. I don't know if they had five, 10, 20 years left, but if I'm able to retire someday, I'm not planning on doing it in three years at 40. I'm planning on doing it when most others hope to, and I hope my retirement doesn't start with my demise from COVID or something else. I'm long-winded on this in other conversations because I'm passionate about it and I'm confident. These are not just my opinions, though. I'm repeating to you the data and the expert opinion on this, not the paranoia, not the quote-unquote "research" somebody does via their Google search. I am not a smart person, but I'm smart enough to seek out the people... I am not a smart person, but I'm smart enough to seek out the people who are. I advise the county do the same. Be careful who you listen to. And we're in the red because we're in the red. As Karen mentioned, having kids in school is important. And she said it correctly, but I want to emphasize it. The way to get them in school is to improve the transmission in this community, not to change the rules, to get them in school despite the risks. The percentage of cases in the general population are high enough that there are students entering school with it. The schools are a Petri dish of exposures. Those students comparatively are at low risk for morbidity or mortality from it, but they in turn take it home to their parents and many times grandparents or the caregivers, who in turn work. Some work in nursing facilities. Some work for the county. Some work in my place of employment. That in turn increases the percent in the community more. It's a vicious cycle. But the difference between these students and their parents and grandparents is the students, the parents and grandparents are at higher risk for morbidity and mortality. I did not want it to get to this point, but we are experiencing the lag data, and this cycle has led to it. On behalf of my inpatient intensivists, the community's got a problem, and it needs to stop when we're still the canary in the coal mine and not the example of where not to I hope everybody supports the suppression of mask gatherings. A hundred is a good number. It's not enough, but I don't think people will support it. Those in the know would say 10. I'm not asking for us to consider that as a group, but personally speaking, 10 people with masks, that sounds crazy. And I hear from people, "We don't want that. We want normal like it was before." Well, guess what? 9/11 happened, and it's called post-9/11. You can't go back. You can't go back. That's how history works. I hope we find a normal like it was, but you don't do it by sticking your head in the sand. 9/11, we lost two major impressive buildings with lots of wonderful people in them. I'm not sure of the exact numbers. My guess would be 3,000 to 5,000 people. Our response to that was a war, changing how you travel forever, changing how we view our interactions on a global stage. We have had over 200,000 excess deaths this year compared with years prior. I'm not saying they're COVID or not COVID. They are excess deaths. We have had deaths in this community. Do I know what our response should be? No, but we're trying. In retrospect, we will learn, and I hope we err on the right side.
Thank you. I've got several questions, and then I'm sure Commissioner Hurst does also. And I don't mean to put any of you on the spot, but I think that through this process, we've looked to the group in front of us today, our health director, our health officer, our medical community for the best answers for the county. And so I've got three or four questions I would like the group to discuss. And if more of one of you want to address any of these questions, please feel free to. My first question is, there's a lot of people in the community that says, "Okay, we're testing more people," so obviously that test rate is going to go up. What is the response? Why do we need more testing? Why do we need to know the accurate positive rate in Reno County?
Let's rewind two or three weeks. I am confident in telling you, if we would have even more participation in community testing, we would have less cases in the hospital. We would have less cases in the nursing home. We would catch patient zero earlier and not be dealing with patient 55 and 56 from that case four to five weeks later. If you're only testing symptomatic people, you're fishing in a pond full of trout. You're going to catch a trout. Your percentage of catching a fish goes through the roof. The positive test rate is a proven metric, both in the medical and epidemiological world, that tells you two things. One, do you have too many cases? But more importantly, are you not testing enough because you need to test more to decrease transmission? The positive test rate and testing is just as important, if not more important, than the masks, hand washing, and social distancing. It's hard to implement in our country because of the wonderful things we have, such as freedom. For communities that, countries that can do it more forcefully, they've suppressed their positive test rate to less than 1%, some less than 0.5%. We will never get to that point. We're looking for a magic number of 3.6% of the population per month. It's at that point that we feel, I hate using the word "feel," but we're in the infancy in some data, that you get a realistic impression of what the transmission is doing in the community. We've reached that. We did briefly. We touched it. And our positive test rate was in the high orange. The virus is outpacing us. We have so many symptomatic people coming that they're getting tested, and they've increased more. My number of 250 per week previously was based on what we had been testing in the community weekly in the symptomatic world. We were trying to match those up to get unskewed data. We need more community testing. We need more people to show up. There's a level of selfishness. If you haven't realized it yet, some of my diplomacy and my wording is gone at this point. There is some selfishness. I don't think people are aware that they're doing it. They don't want to get tested because they don't want to be positive because of the inconvenience. For some people, that inconvenience, that inconvenience is more. Single mother working two jobs. I talk to those people. Some of those single mothers with two jobs, however, say, "It's extra hard on me. I understand. But in addition to being a single mother with two jobs, I take care of my mom. I want to know if I'm positive because I don't want to be the equivalent of Typhoid Mary, who was responsible for hundreds of thousands of death in New York when she unknowingly exposed the whole community to typhoid." Nobody remembers her sister Anne. Anne would be the one who got tested and was positive and therefore quarantined, isolated The positive test rate is the most important lead metric in any gating criteria or retrospective look at how a community is doing. Our community testing has suppressed our positive test rate by about 10%. So if you want to see what the red really looks like, pull out our community testing numbers. I believe upwards of 20. On the flip side, if more people would have come to community testing this weekend instead of 140, maybe we'd be in the orange. If they would have showed up three weeks ago, even better, because we would have caught four or five cases that were the first to disseminate it to adverse populations.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Digner and Mr. Welch, do both of you agree with the comments that Dr. Polly has made that we can't do too much testing to know what is in our environment?
Well, I agree.
Please.
Yeah. I would agree. The more testing that we can get to, the better. It gives us a good indication of our rate. And I also agree with catching the asymptomatics, catching the cases early, and able to appropriately speak with them about self-isolation. Other things to prevent the spread are all very important, and I agree with what Dr. Polly had to say today.
Okay. Standby, doctor. I've got a question. But Chuck?
Sorry, Chuck Welch, Vice President for the hospital again. I just wanted to echo what Dr. Polly said. I think there's some really good worldwide examples. Number one being South Korea. When they knew that that virus was in their community, they were able to deploy millions of tests. They had technology that was beyond ours. They had capabilities that they incorporated that we didn't have. They knew exactly where their hotspots were. They isolated them, and as such, they drove their positive rate down to minuscule rates immediately. Italy, on the other hand, took the approach similar to us. They loved their freedom. They were out and about. That community was ground down to the point where they were picking who got to be mechanically ventilated and who had to die. We don't want to be a little Italy. It is so important that we test everybody so we know where the infection is, we can isolate, let it burn out, and then let everybody go back to their normal lives.
Would you also agree that some people are hesitant of being tested because of what's been suggested, that if I test positive, I can't go to work, I can't support my family, I've got to be home for 14 days, et cetera? Those reasons enter into the testing process?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Digner, I was interested in your comments, and I'm not sure I can phrase this exactly correct, but you suggested to us this morning that I think we have seven deaths in Reno County attributed directly to having COVID-19 and deaths from that virus. But you also stated something today that intrigued me. You say that there are other deaths that have occurred in Reno County to our population due to the fact that they were not willing to come in and be treated for fear. Elaborate a little bit on that comment. That intrigues me that, you know, we're saying to people that, "Yeah, we feel bad for these seven, but there's only seven." You're saying that in reality, it's not seven, but it's some greater number because of the fear of people to come to the medical community. Is that correct?
That is correct. That's what I was trying to get across is, and I can't give you the exact numbers by any means, but I do know that, you know, I'm a pathologist by trade. I see, you know, the biopsies and things come into me, and we look at them. And we, you know, saw, you know, appendicitis that would come in that normally has just a small amount of inflammation. The ones we were seeing during the spring months were, I've been sitting around for weeks before they came in. They were much sicker than they needed to be. We saw the cardiologists seeing patients that were much sicker than they normally would be. We had patients that were, you know, very sick. You know, I can't give you a number of how many died, but you took, look at some of the national studies, some of the national data out there, too. And I think that it is also saying that through this period that we've had, we can argue all day and long about whether this was a COVID death or not a COVID death. I like the statement that we do have 200,000 excess deaths, but we also had deaths from, you know, heart attacks. We had an increased number of the code blacks coming in from the EMTs, the EMS service, in that they're picking up patients that have expired for whatever reason. When people don't seek their routine health care, it allows their underlying conditions to get worse. And, you know, so I can't quote a number, but I, in my heart, believe that, yes, we had excess deaths in this community, clearly in the state, clearly in the nation, from people not seeking their health care either out of fear or out of unavailability during those periods. And that's what we want to avoid getting back to.
Okay. Let me ask these next two questions together, and I guess I'd just like your response. I think I know what it's going to be, but I want the public that's listening and the media that's covering this to know your answers. I'm understanding today that the three of you representing various groups in our health system in Reno County feel that if there is more masking, if there's more social distancing, if there's more hand washing, that that will help our situation today. Secondly, you feel that you support the health order that the health officer is asking to be implemented today. Can we have each of you address those?
And I agree with, completely with the statements that you just said, that I agree with the masks, the hand washing, the social distancing, and the limiting of to 100 where appropriate. I am supportive.
And to those that say that masks don't help and give us this stuff, you're saying that's, quote...
I have my mask on for a reason, and I am supportive of mask wearing.
Thank you. Doctor?
I support all those things, too, obviously, as well as Karen's proposal there on mask gatherings. I'd also like to clarify for those mothers out there working two jobs, taking care of their families. You are obviously not selfish based on what you're doing. Keep taking care of them. For those members of the community who don't have those added responsibilities, it's that mom you need to get community tested for. It's for those who have the time, for those who are already retired, for those who could benefit their employers or their colleagues by getting tested and finding out they're positive. Don't avoid it for fear of isolation. Do it for those others, for that mom with the two jobs and the multiple kids.
Thank you. Mr. Welch, would you comment, please?
Well, just very simply, I'm absolutely in full support of the mask-wearing policy as well as the restrictions on social gathering. Trained respiratory therapist, worn masks in many capacities in my entire life, I can tell you that people will argue and get in the weeds about the porosity of the mask and the size of the virus and this and that. You couple all three of our tools, which are masks, social distancing, and hand washing, that limits the exposure not only from yourself to somebody else, but somebody else to you. It is a barrier, plain and simple. It does work. We have to wear them. It's a simple, easy thing to do, and it's irresponsible not to.
Good. Thank you very much. Commissioner Hurst, I've taken a lot of time, and I apologize for that, but...
Next time I take a little time, then I'll remind you.
Okay, you can do that.
I certainly don't try to be political at all times. I try to keep that completely out of it. But on the same hand, I don't want to stand up here in front of me and try to scare people. I want to put it out there. I don't want to take 10 minutes trying to scare people. I have thought, and I'm going to ask this question. Dr. Digner brought this subject up about not being able to treat people or people being afraid to come in. And I think we were all, and I say "we," were all guilty of, because this was a different virus that we hadn't experienced before. We've all had viruses we've experienced before, but didn't fear of this, and I say "all of us," cause some of the extra deaths. Had we not gone ahead and just not let fear overrun what we had, maybe we'd have staff today. I don't know the answer, okay? But it's just a question that has kind of bugged me a little bit. I don't, I think the statement "do not believe in COVID," I think everybody believes in COVID because of their experience with viruses. Not this particular viruses, but they do. I am extremely concerned with the fact that we are letting some things overwhelm our education and our quality of life and our mental stability of our youth. I am extremely concerned with that. When I hear of a teacher here in the county who has a child that has been contemplating suicide, that never has had that before, but because of all the media, the stress put upon us, and we're talking about it right now, we're doing part of that stress, is that I really question when there's, what, 20, 24 out of our whole population in the county of students that have COVID. Then we isolate all of those other students, take them, send them home? Then we isolate all of those other students, take them, send them home. We're not only hurting that, we're hurting family life. So I, I, I question, I understand the gating, Karen's really helped me out with that. Understand the gating and where it comes from. But when it's, when, say one school system only has two kids and three or four teachers that have had it, we're going to shut them down and let them fail at home? Majority will not do their homework. High school students going to get in their car and they're going to go visit their friends. I think that's where I have a situation with, and, and Dr. Polly mentioned his group of Dr. Christine out of Johnson County, which I've led this up here, stresses the importance of schools, and so does WHO. And the CDC has also stressed that. So I, and I fully believe in mask-wearing and public social distancing. We have the capability, schools have the capabilities of social distancing in their events. I've contacted Karen, I've contacted the chamber, I've contacted the state fairgrounds, the capabilities, with they, they understand the social distancing. And I'm not, I'm not sure gating, community gating necessarily all is, it's important, but I don't think it's something that should determine whether schools are held or not. I think those schools and their school boards and their superintendents can control that without government interference with that. I, I just think that that's, that's my opinion on that, but I, I agree with hand washing, social distancing, and masks in public where you can't maintain those social distances. And I would encourage everyone in Reno County to follow that as well. I think businesses can handle that, they'll, they'll do that. I've talked to some, some manufacturers who, who have a really good handle on this. And so that's my comments for now.
Dr. Polly, did you want to say something else, please?
I appreciate your opinions and the opinions of those you spoke to. The opinions of the experts on this matter, pediatric psychiatrists, psychologists, pediatricians, professional educators, many with their PhD, disagree. They are much more expert in any of this than I am, and therefore much more expert on this than you are. They have weighed all these things in their mission statement, their objectives. It's all weighed. We don't want that child depressed or contemplating suicide. We never do. You're speaking to somebody who contemplates adolescents and children that have those thoughts 365 days a year. So please don't misconstrue my recommendations for gating criteria with me not caring. That's not a part of why I chose this career, but myself, the pediatricians, the psychologists, the psychiatrists, and those educators whose eyes are open enough to see it, see both sides of this. We don't want the students feeling like that because schools will close. We also don't want the students feeling like that because they're afraid that schools are It is myopic to pretend that one happens in the absence of the other. I want all of these students to feel safe, to be safe, and to have parents and grandparents who are safe. I am telling you right now that these experts are weighing these risks, and part of this is when you lose a teacher or a coach or a parent and grandparent to that, to this, that also affects the mental well-being of these students. I want some sense of normalcy. The virus has other plans. I want all of us to be careful with our words and what we know and what we don't know. Sometimes I say things as Scott. Scott doesn't know anything about this. Scott shouldn't be listened to on a microphone or put in the paper or talk out at a local anything, spewing off my opinions, because Scott also ends in Polly M.D., which I'm not bragging about, I'm not proud of. Honestly, I don't think I deserve it. But because of that and our positions, what we say and not being careful with it gets magnified and carries a lot of weight, even when we are saying it off the cuff. I trust my plumber, he's an expert. I trust my pathologist because I'm not an expert. I trust the pilot flying my plane because he's an expert. The pulmonologists trust respiratory therapists because they are the experts in the respiratory therapy. I am trusting those experts in this who have weighed this and use the data in their opinions. We're all welcome to have our opinions, but I'm addressing everybody here, and I apologize for my tone, but we've got to be careful because what we do is pressing our foot on the gas with the virus whether we know it or not. We also need to clarify Dr. Deggner's wonderful statements. What he was saying was, when everything shut down, people likely weren't going to the hospital because, out of fear, and we may have had some morbidity and mortality because that it's unmeasurable. What he is saying is we may experience that differently now. If we don't combat the virus, we will get overwhelmed with the virus, and there will be no room for the heart attack, for the appendicitis. I need to clarify because that is not being relayed back to us in a manner of being understood. So I may ask everybody here, is that clear? We don't want to relive, relive that scenario, but in this case, the cause would be different. The cause wouldn't be a hospital with crickets because we shut down. The problem would be a hospital full of COVID. We don't want to have to take care of COVID. We want to take care of the other things that are inevitable. Again, I apologize for my tone. I'm tired, I'm tired of COVID.
I understand.
And those of us who are tired on the front lines are looking for help, not a hindrance.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Thank you, Dr. Polly. We, we have some school superintendents, I believe, outside that want to address the commission in regard to COVID situation, and so I guess I'd like them to come in at this point in time. I, I hope that none of them will be asking medical questions, but if, if at least one of you could please hang, hang around in case there's a medical question that comes up, please do. We're going to ask the school superintendents to come in and make their presentation to I know, I'm not sure how many are there, but I don't even... Thank you, gentlemen, for being in attendance today.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Don, are you ready first?
Yeah, Don, do you want to represent the superintendents or yourself, or please introduce yourself? Who do you represent, please?
Yeah, I'm Don Johnson, the superintendent at Nickerson-South Hutchinson. So thank you, Commissioner Sellar and Commissioner Hurst for allowing us to speak today, and again, my condolences to Commissioner Bush and his family. So on behalf of the Reno County Public Schools, you know, we have a lot of goals. As you know, I know all of you have been in schools and gone through schools and visited our schools, we have a lot of goals. But right now, our 25-meter target is keeping students in the school, continuing their extracurricular activities, which is a wholesome part of their experience, and allowing the families to be a part of those experiences too. And so that's really where we're at. We're also committed to the gating criteria. And now I know there are a lot of opinions about it, there's a lot of work that has been done to be put into that, and as a community of educators across the state of Kansas, we are committed to the gating criteria. All indications show that we will be in red starting on Monday, October 19th. And so for that, for us, that, that is remote school. We started later, I think, in Reno County, and that allowed us to get PPE. If you visit any school, some students have, you know, shower curtains between their desks, some have plastic dividers between their desks. Students are in as small as group as they can be, some smaller than others, depending on the size of the school. All students are wearing masks. I mean, we're doing hand washing, so we're doing everything that we can in our school community to keep our students safe. And I feel very proud as I walk through those schools and see the efforts being done by teachers and students to keep them safe. What we are asking here today is that you help us, help the community, help us get our kids back in school. So we need that gating criteria to come down because we do want to keep students in school and keep, and keep, keep those experiences going. I think that we have some great leaders, not just in the superintendents, but great leaders in our school boards that are making really difficult decisions, and it's hard for them to sit at a board meeting and folks say, "It's not okay for me to come watch my kid play football, but it's okay that I go to Lowe's and no one's wearing a mask and, and nothing's happening there." And that's a hard, that's a hard sell. And our, our leaders, our school leaders, our board, boards are also committed to keeping kids safe and keeping kids in school. And they're making the tough decisions that we need our entire community to help us make and to get behind them to make. And so I think that, that recommendation for masks, the recommendation for mask gatherings, that helps send a message in our community that we are in this together, that we are supporting this, but it can't be on the schools. And I was the first one to say that maybe that helped, you know, get us where we are today, but it can't just be on the schools to fix this community issue. Just having students out of school, if nothing else changes, isn't going to help, help that gating criteria come back down to, to orange or yellow where we can get our students in school. And so that's, that's what we're here for today. We'll answer any questions you have, but we're looking for your support to send a message to the community that we all have to do our part to help, to get those numbers down.
Superintendent Don, this isn't a question. Welcome back.
Thank you.
And thank you for the service to our country.
Cool, thank you very much.
I bet that was very interesting the last year.
Yeah.
Challenging and interesting.
Yeah, very much so. But I'm, I'm excited to be back. It's fun to be back. Thanks.
Okay, Don, maybe you can answer the question that I think some of the people within the county might have, is the county commission has no control over the school districts. The control of the school districts is from the State Board of Education and their requirements of the districts. And where this is becoming an issue for us is because we're moving to the red zone? And could you explain what the red zone does?
Yeah, so in the, in the, back in June, KDHE, in concert with the CDC and KSD, and, and I wasn't here at the time, so I don't want to speak for everyone who was a part of that, but I understand pediatricians and quite a, quite a working group that Dr. Polly has talked about. And so as the numbers increase, the, the, the idea is, of course, that we were trying to get to green. So when we were all out of school, what does it need to look like for us to get back in school? And there's still some schools in, in the state of Kansas and, of course, around the country that are not even in school yet. So we're blessed that in Reno County, we were able to get to the green, the numbers got down, we were able to start school. I don't think any of us thought four to six weeks into starting school, we'd be in the red. It happened a lot faster than I think any of us would have expected. So yellow meant that we were going to start doing some restrictions. Again, we're already doing masks, we're already doing distancing as much as we can in schools. We're already having lunch in classrooms and not doing mask gatherings and alternating passing periods. So when we get to the orange then, we went to a hybrid education model. So we're trying to reduce the footprint in the school and reduce, especially in the high schools, the number of students that might be in any given hallway passing period. You know, we're reducing the ability for all third graders to have PE together or have recess together because we want to keep those numbers low. When we go to the red, we're talking about remote learning. So we're talking about no athletics, no spectators, remote learning for students, and that's, that's probably, that's where we're going to be on Monday. And boards are making tough decisions about how do we mitigate that? How do we continue to do the best that we can? And the, the, the number one priority really is to get that gating criteria back down to the orange and yellow so we can continue on with school as normal as possible in this environment.
Okay. Would any of the other superintendents like to say anything else about the comments that Dr. Johnson has made? Yes, Mr. Folks?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Mike Folks, Superintendent here in Hutchinson, 308. First of all, I want to just show my support for Dr. Polly, his comments, and Karen Hammer Smith. I think they did an excellent job. Also, I think Don did a great job representing the school districts. The only thing that I would add is that, you know, we can't carry the burden of the weight of this just as school leaders and boards of education. We are a system within a greater system, and that's our community. And so we need help. We need other community leaders like yourselves to support and help mitigate the spread because it just seems like that, you know, we're carrying the burden right now and it's just too much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I have two other superintendents here. Cindy?
Superintendent Cindy Couchman of Bueller Schools. I, I'm going to, I don't want to repeat everything that's been said. I do want to make sure that, as a commission, that you understand how much work Karen Hammer Smith and Dr. Scott Polly have put into, not, I mean, not just meeting with superintendents, but various groups, and to commend their work. We are a symbiotic relationship with schools. Schools and communities have to survive together. Our community at Bueller High School does not end when they walk out of our walls. Those, those kids work in our nursing homes. We have parents that have two, another job in the evenings. They may work at Starbucks or Dylan's. That our community, we are doing what we can within the walls of our high schools and our elementary schools, but our community is bigger than that. Our community is, is Hutchinson, Bueller, Nickerson. We are all one community. And I think that that symbiotic relationship has to be successful. And we're doing our part, we're just asking for the county to do their part. And I think that's what I, both, both Superintendent Johnson and Superintendent Folks has asked, is let's get, all get in the rowboat and start rowing the same direction. Because when we do go to, and we let kids out and they're all being masked up and washing their hands, and, and then they go and they go out to a place and no one's doing any of it, it just feels very defeating. And so we're just asking you to get in our canoe with us and start rowing.
Okay, Cindy, you say you want the county to do our part. I, I'm hoping you're meaning that the citizens of the county.
Yeah.
Certainly, the commission of the county has been very supportive of masking, distancing, washing, all these things, and, and the attributes of what we're trying to handle. You're asking for better community support.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, and, you know, I think that the proposal that Don or that Karen Hammer Smith has brought to you is, is that's, that's another step in that part to do. We just, everybody's just got to get diligent about the mask-wearing, that's for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate you guys for inviting us. Appreciate that.
But thank you for waiting. I'm sorry for the time lag. Betsy, please?
It's all part of the community, as you said.
Hi, Betsy McKinney, Superintendent at Fairfield. I don't have a lot to say. I, I just do want to thank, personally thank Dr. Polly and Karen Hammer Smith for their guidance through this. I'm not a medical expert, so I've had to rely on medical experts. And there's so much data out there, you could almost pull data to make whatever point you want to make. So I've had to rely on the accurate data, you know, prepared by the Reno County Health Department that doesn't have a message to claim, but it's just data to drag decisions. And I think, I think we would have been lost without the guidance of the people that have helped us through that. Like the other superintendents, I think the point is that we all need to work together. Our kids need to be in school, and we need to do what we can as a community to get that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. We thank a lot of, of Karen and her department for leadership in, in this issue. Dr. Polly or Karen, our rates have gone up in the last... Dr. Polly or Karen, our rates have gone up in the last two or three weeks significantly. Is there any knowledge that you can relate to us, how much of this increase is due to schools in session, and/or how much of it is just due to the community? Is that a question that is answerable at all?
Fair question to look into.
It's a fair question. The answer might be harder.
Yeah.
We have data that'll point us in a direction. Our number of pediatric adolescent persons with COVID, I believe if I'm saying this right, in the most recent, like, three-week period, we reproduced what we did in the previous, like, five or six-month period. Meaning, we're doubling our numbers, not on a many-month basis, but in a more shorter timeframe. We also know that 2% to 3% to 4% to 5% of the population at any one time in our county right now has it. That's based on data we have locally by testing asymptomatic and symptomatic people. All of that is with a lot of help from people who are math majors. We also know that we're missing a lot in the pediatric population, because they tend to have minimal or no symptoms. Those less than 10 years old tend to transmit it less. Those older than 10 transmit it like adults. The gating recommendations from the experts are based on the most up-to-date data and comfort level they have, and it comes with the quote, "This is the most lenient that these gating metrics should be, given the current scenarios and our current understanding." But it's called a work group for a reason. It's fluid. We have been in active discussions, and the superintendents and I were in active discussions, with if we stay in the orange, how can we meet a few additional goals, such as keeping the students in class five days a week? So we've made some proposals with each other on how to make that happen while also mitigating the virus. While we were making those plans, the virus kept accelerating, kind of beat us to the punch. We have to take a step back, and we're kind of still reeling from that punch. We hope that the data brings us in a direction where we find that even in a red zone, schools may be safe to be open, or, I mean, I can imagine, maybe even safer than sending them home. But I don't know. My job is to be based on evidence. I'm not here to give them my opinion. It's to give them the most up-to-date data with as much accuracy as we can. I hope that's the case, but what I hope is different than what I know.
Okay. Thank you. Karen, any comments on this?
I think one of your questions was, you know, how the number of cases are going in schools. But it's related to our entire community. So the school child has a parent who works at a jail, or who works at a hospital, or both parents work at one or the other, and it's all related. So that's where we get into having problems around the entire community, because we're all related. Our hospitals have been full, fuller than they've ever been, with COVID-related cases for the last few weeks. Fortunately, these aren't children, but the children are helping to spread that. So that is what we want to do, is we want to slow the spread and get these kids back in school safely.
Okay. Thank you. Karen?
Go ahead. We talked the other day. Would you explain a little bit about, based on that percent upcoming? A lot of people, including me, didn't understand that it's put back to 100,000 population. Is that correct, the percentage somehow?
So that's when you're looking at, that's when KDHE and Kansas Department of Education set the gating criteria and set the numbers. So when you're looking at case counts, we're not just counting, like, oh, we have a certain number and we're good. We need to look at Reno County, what our population is, and what would be the number of new cases that is going to put us in that red zone, put us in the yellow zone. And so that's just not compared to a small community. That's compared to our county, and they put everybody at the same percentages. And I'm not a mathematician either, but I can tell you that I was, when we were in yellow and green and looking at this, and it was just like, red was so far in the future, because that's what we've been doing. We've had these rose-colored glasses on this whole entire time, thinking, you know what? This isn't going to be that bad. And I looked at the red and said, oh, well, if we have that many cases, we've got a problem. And I kind of thought in my head, we're not going to get there. But we did get there, way quicker than we thought. And then by talking to the hospital, you can understand very quickly how they get overwhelmed very quickly. So the other day, we had 15 cases in critical care, and that takes up, it may, they may not all be COVID cases, but 15 cases in critical care is an enormous amount for our hospital. Then they, they're not able to take care of the motor vehicle accident that comes in. So...
I just wanted to kind of reiterate the fact that it's a percentage of our population.
Yes.
That's why, so people a lot of times don't understand that. So what I've found. Thank you.
I'd just like to say to the school superintendents present and to their boards that, speaking just for myself, I can't speak for the commission, but I feel like the county commission has done everything within its power to suggest to people to be good and to try to keep your schools open. We'll plead to the community more, to be better stewards of the community and so forth. I don't think there's anything worse than having students out of school. I understand the problems that are created, but I also think about the fourth grade or fifth grade student that loses a half a year of school, that I don't feel like we can ever make that up to that individual. That individual will not have what you and I had, Ron. And we've got to get this under control so that those students can be in school and learn. And I know you're doing everything you can for the virtual part, but it's not the same. And it just won't do what we need to do to have those kids in school. So in any way, the county commission can help you folks be successful. We'll work on it. One comment, Dr. Polly, and then we're going to move on.
I'd just like to thank them, and everyone here appreciates our superintendents and the boards. And we can't say we want kids in school without saying what you alluded to, by controlling the virus in our community. Those go hand in hand. Some will see this as, well, there's an easy way to keep the kids in school, just open it up. But I think we're all in agreement that the play to get to the end zone is get the virus under control. In the end zone, the goal is the kids will be in school.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else, Adam, outside that wants to speak to this subject? I know we have other things, but before we close this subject this morning, I'd like to see if there's anyone else that wants to speak to this subject.
Thank you all.
Thank you, superintendents, for being with us. I'm sorry for the delay in having you speak, and please, thank you for the comments that you give to the health department and to Dr. Polly for his help. Yes.
Thank you. Just a little bit off topic.
I just want to thank our commissioners for the support of the Sparks money. I think here in Reno County, our public schools have been, have been a factor of just some great resources because of your support, and I would be remiss if I didn't state that. I had good intentions of being here and thanking you in person or writing you a letter, but we've been pretty busy. But thank you so much. That has been very important to us.
I think the Sparks money has been so well done. I've had ourselves on the back, but Reno County has done an excellent job by getting the people involved that we did. I know how much it's helping you with the additional funds to pay for some certain things.
Committee leadership on that with John and Gary Deser, and Leslie Deser.
Actually, Dell Dennis, who's our retired finance commissioner for the state of Kansas, said that, you know, we probably got the largest amount of any of the 105 counties.
Well, I know a lot of the counties kind of took the money themselves and ran, and that was not our mission. It was be fair to everybody. And I think next week, we're going to see some money distributed to some of the nonprofits. And so the whole process has been very good, but thank you for the thank you. We have one lady that wants to discuss. I assume this subject is COVID and relates to schools, but please introduce yourself. Limit your comments to less than five minutes.
I'll try to make it one. Good morning. My name is Laura Meyer-Dick. I am the president of USD 313 Bueller, and first, I want to express my condolences to my dear friend, Bob Bush, who, there was no truer public servant than Bob Bush, and we will miss him greatly. I'm just here as a school board member, but I'm also a business owner, and I just am asking for your help for whatever you can do, because small businesses, it's our livelihood, and there's a lot of friction out there of people not wearing masks. And small businesses are scared to ask people to wear masks, because they're scared of losing business, which will affect their paycheck, and they're scared of the repercussions. We started asking for requiring masks in one of my businesses, and we were left a very nasty note this weekend when we opened back up on Monday. And I'm just asking, I know you're doing all you can, but let's get creative. You've got a new communication director. Let's just keep trying to push the message, because we've got to keep these kids in school. I fully agree with both of you. They're never going to get this time back, and so I'm just asking for you to help the small business owners as well as the schools.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you. From my standpoint, I will never be a part of closing businesses.
Yeah. Well, I just, wearing the masks in the businesses to protect the people that are in there, we've got to do that, so.
Thank you, Laura, for being here. If there's no other comments on this subject, I think we'll take a seven-minute break and reconvene at 10:30. Thank you.